Good evening, Mr. Eddie Smotherman. Councilmember has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Smotherman, let us pray. Holy Spirit come and be with us, guide and enlighten us. Help us this night and every day to do your will. We want to be open and inspired by you and we certainly want to allow our lives to be reflections of your creative power. God bless America and this wonderful city we live in. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, March 7th, 2013. I believe we have some Stars Awards tonight. Is that right, Ms. Logan? There you are. Why don't you do that for us and I'll come down and help you do that. How about that?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm glad to be here tonight to present to you the Stars Award winners for the month of February. I'm proud tonight to recognize Captain Nora Smith, Captain Terry Smith, and Captain Clay Walls with the City of Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department for their actions in which they went above and beyond the extra mile for a fire in December, which they -- there had been some situation at the fire that they were aware of after the fact, and they went and did some things that are not normally called for and what their duty requires. You know, I think that it's really important to note that a lot of times our employees for the City of Murfreesboro do a lot of things that we don't ever know about or see. And I once was told that it's not what you do when people are watching that makes you a leader, it's what you do when no one else is watching that makes you a leader. And I think that tonight, these three people definitely exemplify that. I'm very proud to work with them and to know them, and I've seen all three of them in action, and this is a great evening for us to once again recognize the employees for the City of Murfreesboro. So with that, Mayor, if you want to say anything, we'll present their certificates to them.
We're certainly proud of all our frontline employees and you epitomize the wonderful spirit that our city employees have, working with our residents and our business owners and our visitors and making life easier and better, even though sometimes it's hard and difficult. And I know you do great, and we are thrilled to have you and your family members here. So come over and introduce your family members for me that are here. Come on, stand over here, because I want you on camera. I want you to get a little recognition. How about that? Who've we got here?
This is my daughter, Jacey. This is my little fella here, this is Gavin.
All right.
And my wife, Sheila.
Hi, Sheila.
All right. Fabulous. We're glad you're here. Clay, come on over.
This is my wife, Robbie. She's also an employee of the city. She works for the police department.
Great. That's wonderful. And do you have some folks you want to introduce?
Yes, I'd like to introduce my crew. My driver, Randy Shaw, firefighter David Frost, and firefighter Jeff Clemente. And they assist me every day in everything that I do.
And make you look good. Is that right, Nora?
It most certainly does.
Thank you. Very good, very good. So Captain Terry Smith, if you'll come up, I want to give you this. And thank you very much for your service and for your years of service and bringing such a beautiful family with you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very nice. Congratulations. Nora, it is an honor and a tribute for me to get to present this to you tonight along with these other firefighters, and we are thrilled that you're here and that you keep taking care of us every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Captain Clay Walls, again, it's my honor to present this, and we are always honored to have you with us and appreciate what you do and taking care of us all the time. Thank you. And to your family members. Did you have some other things for them there, Shan?
Yes, we want to make sure that they get these big whopping $25 checks. Don't spend it on one place now. And I would just like, if we could, just to give them a round of applause for what they and all of our firefighters do for us every day.
Thank you. It's a wonderful occasion to get to honor those folks who work with us every day and, as I say, are on the front line for our city. And I think no matter what the situation is, when we see one of our public safety officers coming at us, it's a relief in many instances and always reassures us that our city is looking after our public safety, and certainly our firefighter and rescue department do that every day. So we're very pleased and proud to have you here and appreciate you coming. Thank you. Thanks very much. All right, councilmembers, any announcements anybody wants to make before we get started on our consent agenda this evening? No? Okay, good. You have the consent agenda then in front of you. It's quite considerable, so if you have any questions regarding the consent agenda now, it would be a good time to bring those up. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's been presented?
So moved. Second.
A motion is second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January 31st, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider annexing approximately 3.27 acres adjacent to the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the February 17th, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Wright and councilmembers. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider annexing approximately 3.27 acres located adjacent to the city's Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. That property is identified as the orange area in the map on the screen. If you also refer to that map, you can see that area shaded green is current city limits, which shows that the subject area is contiguous with current city limits along this boundary. The city is looking at this request because the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer has requested annexation of this portion of property, not the entire property, of this 3.27 acre portion of property, so that it can be included in the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. There are plans to improve and expand that plant, and this portion of property would be a part of the headworks facility plan, and so it is an integral and critical part of the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plan, and it's necessary that it be located at this site. The request for annexation is being made so that this entire property will be within Murfreesboro city limits, so that it's clearly within the city's permitting authority and city's jurisdiction to provide services and to review the plans. Again, the property is contiguous with current city limits. It's also located within our urban growth boundary. The city can provide city services as outlined in the Plan of Services, which you've received in your packets. Most of those services will be through the existing plant as an extension of that existing plant, since it will be a part of that development. The closest street is Blanton Drive, which does dead end into the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant, although this property doesn't have any direct access to a public right-of-way, but it does have access to that Blanton Drive once it will be developed. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing. Six of the members were present that evening, and all six members did recommend that you annex this property, 3.27 acres. If you have any questions about the Plan of Services or this annexation, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing before formulating your decision.
Ms. Ely, who owns the property?
Currently, the Hord family owns the property, and the city is in process of acquiring the 3.27 acres.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this annexation, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Joy Hord, and that property is owned by Charles and Joy Hord, and I'm here with my husband's permission to speak. We understand the process of eminent domain. We do not object to the fact that this property will be taken by eminent domain. I'm here to ask you to not annex the property at this time. We have not been paid for the property. I think that the annexation is premature. We have some serious reservations about the contract. We have voiced some objections and asked to be heard by a judge concerning the contract and actually some of the boundaries of that property. And when the proper time comes, we will not object to annexation, but at this point, I think it's too soon.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this annexation? Anyone at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to annex an area adjacent to Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. Do we have any further information that we can allow on Ms. Hord's request?
Mayor, the timing of the annexation is, as was stated, so that the property is within the city boundaries at the time the construction plans are submitted for approval in terms of who the reviewing and approving authority is. And because we do have a lead time with annexations and we are, you know, moving forward with the construction, that is the reason for doing it now rather than after the purchase or if necessary condemnation has been concluded. This will not affect positively or negatively the condemnation proceedings and the value to be paid to the Hords in any way or change tax status.
Any questions of the council?
What stage are we in in negotiations? Are we in negotiations?
Yes, we in fact have -- are in the process of offer and counteroffer, so we are in negotiations, yes.
So in essence, you're just trying to make sure that we have the opportunity to make whatever approvals are on the use of the property? All right, you have this ordinance on first reading to annex an area adjacent to the Sinking Creek wastewater treatment plant. Do you have any other questions or comments from the council?
I move for passage on first reading.
Is there a second? Without a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Young, seconds. Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other questions or comments regarding this ordinance on first reading?
Ms. McGannon, would -- is this a long, lengthy process? I mean, are we talking about a year before this could be worked out with the legal aspects for both sides of this, or is this a 60-day problem or a --?
We expect, and I may ask Mr. Ives to speak to some of the details, we expect that the order of possession, which would transfer title, even though value to be paid would not be determined, would take place before the annexation ordinance became effective. So if that's what you're talking about in terms of sequencing, if you're talking about the time for review of the construction plans, should probably ask Mr. Gore to speak to that, because I'm not quite sure all that's involved. We know we, you know, have state approvals as well as our local approvals to go through.
Would it be grievously harm to the city to delay this for 90 days? I don't know.
I think both Mr. Gore and Mr. Ives should speak to that. We wouldn't have brought it to you if we hadn't thought this was the appropriate time, but I will let them speak to the degree of harm that might be affected.
This headworks project has basically been on hold, I guess, for several years due to the fact that in 2010, the Water and Sewer Board was looking at the options of maybe decentralized plants and land disposal. We did a two-year study with Hazen and Sawyer, which determined that the best and most cost-effective plant expansion was the central plant at Sinking Creek. When that occurred, we did move forward with state revolving fund to secure the loan. This is about a $12 to $13 million headworks construction, which is a primary screening facility at the plant. The -- my understanding is, so we're ready. I mean, the construction drawings have been approved by the state, the funding is in place, and we're ready to move forward, and this is really the only securing or getting the right of possession of the easements and this property is the only thing, the last hurdle basically to go through. So to answer your question, it is, I believe, imperative to get this annexation now so we don't have to go through approval with the county. I think we would have to go through their planning and approval process if this is not annexed, which would just delay the project further. So that's where we are as far as construction goes.
I'll speak briefly to the process that we're in now. Mr. Gore and other water and sewer folks had spoken several times with the families about acquiring this property, and we had an appraisal. It was -- the appraisal was reviewed, the offer was made, and it was not accepted. When it appeared that there was not going to be a consensual transaction, we filed for condemnation in early December. And there are three separate parcels. This particular one is the headworks parcel. There's other easement parcels that are -- that involve both Mr. and Mrs. Hord and other members of the Hord family. We filed three separate parcels, and is the standard, when you file suit -- I'm sorry, we filed three separate suits for the separate parcels. And as a standard, one went to each of our three judges who hear civil cases. All three of them recused, and from not only the case that was assigned to them, but from the other cases. We are still waiting on our presiding judge to find us a judge to hear the case. So we don't have a possession hearing set at this time. I think initially it was set for either mid-January or mid-February, but of course, that had to be vacated because we didn't have a judge. We're trying to get that done. Of course, we tendered the appraised amount in. A few weeks, couple of weeks probably, in mid-December, the Hords made us a counteroffer. It was a bit complicated. It involved a number of factors. We started the analysis. When the judges all recused themselves and we didn't have a possession hearing date, it somewhat fell off the front burner. It shouldn't have, but it did. Our response to their counteroffer was sent out a week ago, I believe. We are still open to some negotiations and will continue to try to do so. How long it will take to reach a final agreement is -- I cannot project. If we end up going to court on these, it could be at least two years, maybe three, before there's a final agreement. But hopefully, within the next 60 or so days, we'll get a judge appointed, we'll get to our possession hearing. I believe the courts will give us possession of all the properties. These are clearly for a public purpose. There are some disputes between the city and the families about a variety of things, but it doesn't impact the public purpose of this project, and that's what counts for the condemnation. So and at that time, of course, once we get possession, the funds that have been tendered into court will be paid to them. How much, if any, additional funds are paid to them will not be determined until either we reach an agreement with them or a judge or jury tells us how much it is.
So to summarize, you have -- We have to go through the county approval process. It will delay the construction that is otherwise ready to proceed, which is independent of the condemnation process.
Any other questions?
Ms. McGannon, I'm gonna go on a long shot here, and I guess what Ms. Hord's concern probably is, is that if we go ahead and annex it and then she's gonna end up getting a tax bill for property that she's not gonna ultimately own from the city as well as her county taxes, how do we address if that's the concern? And I don't know that, but it's my --
The correspondence that Mr. Ives referenced referred to that. Let me go ahead and provide a copy of it to the members of the council and read from what we indicated at that time. "As a practical matter, title passes to the city at the time of recording the order of possession. The prior owner's responsibility for property taxes ends at that time. I expect that the order of possession will be granted and recorded well before the annexation becomes effective, which may, because of the judicial matter, not be the case. But as all the members of the council know, tax status would be determined by, you know, January 1st of next year, and we certainly expect that we will have a change in possession before that date." And, you know, certainly, one of the items, since we still hope to be able to resolve the matter through negotiation, one of the conditions that I expect the council could certainly direct the city to include would be, you know, an amount equivalent to any taxes that were paid for that intervening period. So I think we can certainly make it tax-neutral if the unlikely timing should develop that they would otherwise be applicable. The, you know, the -- don't believe that that would be a substantive amount. But the primary reason is not because of the condemnation proceedings or, you know, the taxes, but because of the delay caused by going through the county regulatory process for this construction, which is long delayed on an essential water and sewer function and building.
All right. Any other questions regarding this ordinance to annex on first reading?
And it just passes, Ms. McGannon, I would like for part of the ultimate outcome to be that it becomes tax-neutral for the current owner.
And that was an assumption I always had. I bet you figured that out.
Yeah, we don't expect it as a practical matter, but certainly, should that develop, that would be an element.
Okay, all right.
All right, anything else before we vote? Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. It's not done yet, Ms. Hord, but it's on the way. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January 31st, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider adopting the Greenways, Blueways, and Bikeways master plan. Notice of said public hearing was published in the February 3rd, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Brad, members of the council. Tonight, we are moving forward with adoption and consideration and adoption of the Greenways, Blueways, Bikeways master plan. I almost always have to look at the title because it's a little bit long and it's hard to get my tongue around it. All the same, it is a very -- it's a project that I think has been one of the more enjoyable projects I've worked on, and I think it's gonna be one of the projects that I think is gonna have a long-term and positive influence on our community. As a planning project, it's a little bit different than a lot of things that the planning department brings to you. Lots of times, we bring you zoning ordinance amendments or zoning map amendments or annexations. This is a master plan, and as a master plan, it's a little bit different. In this case, the Planning Commission has already adopted it. It's moving forward for you, for you to also consider for adoption. This has been a project that has had a lot of study and a lot of opportunities for public input, and I want to go through some of the opportunities we've had. The project started with a kickoff on November 16th of 2011. There was a citizens or a study advisory committee, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about it in just a moment. It met in December of -- December 16th of 2011. Then there were stakeholder interviews, members of the community that were interviewed on this. And that went through February of 2012. There was another study advisory committee meeting in March of 2013, a public meeting in March of 2012, excuse me, 2012. More study advisory committees, a technical workshop in August of 2012, another public meeting in September of 2012. Then we had a joint city council, Parks Commission, Plan Commission, and Greenway Special Committee meeting on October 22nd of 2012. The matter then moved to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission had a study session again, not as detailed as the joint meeting, but another session in December of 2012. The Planning Commission had a public hearing on it on January 9th of 2013. Then subsequently, it adopted the plan. So this has been a study that's had a lot of public input and a lot of involvement from the Planning Commission and input from the city council. Some of the committee members include Mr. Randall Branch, Ms. Cynthia Allen, Mr. Mark Demant, Mr. James Herring, Mr. Eddie Miller, Dr. Kim Sadler, Mr. Kent Siler, and Mr. Kurt Wade, a representative of the Planning Commission. And I want to really express a lot of appreciation for them sticking with us and working on this project. Also, we had staff involved. These were pretty much ex-officio, Mr. Lanny Goodwin with Parks and Recreation, Angela Jackson, myself, Dana Richardson, Mr. David Ives, Ms. Cynthia Holloway, and Ms. Melinda Tate. We had the lengthy presentation in October for the City Council, the Plan Commission, the Recreation Commission, and the Special Projects Committee, but this is the document that came out of it. We have posted on our internet. We have made it available at my office, and it's been available to anybody who's wanted to have an opportunity to review it. This plan does not have the force of an ordinance. It is not a regulatory document like a zoning ordinance would be. However, it has considerable influence on matters of planning, particularly as it affects roadway plans in the future, developers' obligations on subdivision development, site plans, and budgeting for the city. It must be recognized that as a plan document, there are some inherent flexibility that must be exercised as projects are identified and quantified. As we examine a site plan, we will have the best look at it based upon the surveyors' review of the property and bring us data that is very, very site-specific, that can never be achieved at a very broad planning effort like this. So the maps are broad. They are not precise. And later on, we'll identify elements that may influence routing, that may influence design. For instance, when Mr. Griffith begins to work on a road project, he will have a surveyor out there that's gonna identify where there are existing trees, where there are sinkholes, where there are rivers, floodplains, that can't be seen at this level of planning. All the same, he can make provisions for these type of facilities in his plans so that they will become a reality. This has been a project that is not the first. We have already got a bicycle master plan for the city and a Greenways master plan. It's run its course. It's time that it be updated, and that's what this effort has been about. I want to point out also that this has been worked on with a consultant, Mr. Jeff Hammond with RPM. He's present tonight. And Mr. John Lavender with Lowson Associates. They've been invaluable in getting this document to where it is as a resource that it's gonna be for the community in the future. Myself, Mr. Richardson, and other staff members are present. If you have questions, you need to have a public hearing, and then you need to deliberate, and then you need to consider adoption of the master plan.
The name of the young man with Lowson Associates?
John Lavender.
Lavender. Thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Adelot before I open the public hearing?
Joseph, you mentioned that we already have --
Joseph, you mentioned that we already had a plan in place. When was that plan originally put in place?
The plan that we're currently operating under was adopted in the early 1990s. I was a young planning director at that time. We had an opportunity to work on that project, and it's been something that we have used as a tool since then.
So you're saying you're not a young planning director anymore?
I'm a middle-aged planning director.
Would those individuals who worked with us in the study committee please stand up and be recognized? Thank you. Thank you very much. There you go. All right, any other questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open a public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against an ordinance to adopt the Greenways, Blueways, and Bike Ways master plan, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Jake Robinson, 5128 MacArthur Avenue. I want to thank the council, I do have a presentation to present. Do you need just one moment to bring it up? Now, if I can ask the booth to, there we go. I've got questions and a few concerns about this program. And as a resident of Murfreesboro, I have studied the 2009 pedestrian and bike study that was produced by the Nashville MPO. For the last couple of years, I've become familiar with how that's affected the county government, and now how it's affecting our city government. So I'd like to take just a quick, a little bit about how the MPO, the Nashville Metropolitan Planning Organization, influences our bike and greenway plan. The Metropolitan Planning Organization is made up of all the city mayors and county mayors in a five-county area, and an executive board, and I believe Mayor Bragg, you may be on that board. In 2000, they came out with the 2035 Regional Transportation Plan, they adopted this a few years back, and at that time, our county mayor, Ernest Burgess, was the chair of this organization, and they came up with a 25-year growth plan for the whole region. And as a consequence, individual counties started developing their own comprehensive plans, and then the cities within them integrate some of those same factors. This is a map of Tennessee of all the MPO's transportation planning organizations and regional planning organizations. Every county belongs to one, so you see the five counties there. They do have the authority as a federally designated transportation planning to spend the money that's allocated by Congress. Funding from the MPO is, comes through grant programs authorized by US Congress through our budget process. So almost every project we do that comes through the Nashville MPO, whether it's a street program, a road program, or a bike or greenway or blueway, tends to have strings attached from the FHA, the Federal Transit Authority, EPA, and some other organizations. And there's the, just a footprint of the five counties that are part of that organization. Looking at the Nashville, the regional bicycle and pedestrian study, there's some things that came up that kind of grabbed my attention, and back then, they were, in 2009, they had projected or proposed 1,127 new miles traversing the entire five-county area, and you can see the other numbers there. That was back in 2009, and when I took a look at what we're doing here today with the greenway program, we are suggesting or proposing an additional 173 miles of greenways, park, blueways, bicycle lanes and routes, 67 miles of greenways. And this is what it says in the bike and pedestrian study. "Large number of communities through their zoning and subdivision regulations require sidewalk and bikeway accommodations." I know that Mr. Adelot just said that this is not the force of law, that doesn't have zoning tied to it, but it does have considerable influence, which he did mention as well. And it's very difficult to get away from the influence of what these plans want to do over the course of time. I have reservations about this plan, and when I voiced my reservations to several of the county, city councilmen here, some of the response I got, well, this is, we gotta have a plan, and then also, this, you know, this is a long-term plan, it could be 20 years before we do some of these things. And that's the thing, the time factor, 20 years may sound like a nice insurance policy if you're a homeowner and you don't, you're not sure how this is gonna affect you, but there's already homeowners that have experienced this 20-year cycle. If we can go back to the program, funding programs, this is from the study again, "Costs associated with constructing the bicycle and pedestrian facilities recommended in the study far exceed available resources." That is what a lot of our taxpayers are concerned about, is the nature of how we allocate the resources that we do. The city seems to do very well. We've had, hadn't had a tax increase in 13 or 14 years. However, if you study the numbers, we see our revenues going up every year over the last 13 years, but we also see our debt going up even higher or faster rate than our revenues. What that suggests is, as long as we have new people moving in, we have new money to be able to borrow against and to carry our debt, but eventually, that's, that may come back to haunt us. The regional sidewalk and bikeway system, when I, when I, when I talk to my friends and say, hey, they're proposing 1,100 new miles of bikeways, could you want to take a guess how much it might cost to do that? And I get things like, well, 10 million. No, higher, 20 million. No, guess again, 45 million? They never can guess that it can be nearly $800 million is what the Nashville MPO suggested that this project was gonna cost if we allocated it throughout the five counties. And I'm gonna get into the cost for just Murfreesboro. And when I saw this map, this is the Rutherford County aspect of the regional plan, I said, well, okay, that's a, you know, that's a roadmap, right? And you look closely, it's not a roadmap, it's a bicycle map. So when you look at those, you can see those blue lines there are eight major arteries originating out of Murfreesboro, going all the way to the county line for bike routes, and then all the red lines are bike routes within the cities of Smyrna, Murfreesboro, et cetera. That seems like a whole lot of bike paths. I mean, I like bicycles, I actually own one, but I don't know that we need, I don't know if we need that many bicycle paths. I would like to see some of the other sporting activities maybe looked at compared to why do we need so much, so many bike paths and greenways? And in the county plan, the county said, we need to develop a countywide greenway system and integrate the system to the existing greenway system. Well, the existing greenway system is mainly the city's greenway system, and it's the one that's the most, I guess, the most developed system in our county. This is where I'd like to focus some of the folks that may not really consider what it is when a city says, hey, we're gonna build some greenways. It sounds nice on paper, but it says here, the question is, how can a bike path violate my property rights? Now, I understand that eminent domain is legal, and by what I feel like is a travesty of a Supreme Court decision in Makillo, cities and government organizations can take property by eminent domain. We just saw an example right here where the lady just asked for a slight delay while she worked out her property value. It's one thing to say, okay, it's vital to have clean water or expand a road, a roadway, but when you start talking about bike paths, now we start talking about why should somebody have the right to take property for something that's a recreational activity? And you might know about Dave McCurry. Dave bought his property 28 years ago, and when he came to his property, he actually had his dad come out before he bought it and said, Dad, do you think that I'd ever have a problem with somebody taking my property? And 28 years ago, you'd say, why would he ask a question like that to his dad? His dad went through two takings of his property. The first was when TVA flooded the valley, and his dad's house with eight acres was in that area, so they used eminent domain and took his property. When they studied the plan, they realized that only five out of the eight acres was gonna be flooded. The house and three acres would be spared. They begged TVA to carve out that three acres and a house and allow them to keep their home. They didn't, and now a federal judge lives in that house. So they took, they got paid, and he took the money and went down the road. And Dave McCurry's dad bought a house, consequently, the Federal Transit Authority came through and built an interstate system, and he had his house taken again. So it was a pretty good, it was a pretty logical reasoning that he might ask his dad, hey, I'm thinking about buying this property, do you think there's a possibility it could happen to me? Well, he said, son, you got plenty of frontage, well, big front yard, if they come in here and widen this road out, I don't think you're gonna have a problem, so I don't think you have an issue there. You already have a river in your backyard, so I don't think you have to worry about TVA coming in. Dave never thought that he'd lose his house over a walkway and a bike path, and that's happening. And, get back on track here. It says here, "The master plan identified greenway routing and valuable points of interest along the corridor, making note of all property acquisition that would be required." This is the Stones River Greenway master plan that Mr. Adelot just spoke of. The exact year was 1993, Councilman Smotherman, when this master plan was proposed. Now, I've been told that, oh, you don't have to worry, this is just a plan, it's a guideline, it doesn't have the force of law. And I bet that when Dave first heard about this, he probably thought, surely not gonna take my house over a bike path. In fact, they didn't really have to. If you really look at the plans leading up to the taking, they originally were gonna run the greenway on the other side of the river, where a subdivision had already been built, and the developer had already set aside property for the greenway. For whatever reason, they chose to change that, that route and come across the river, and now they're taking his home. And so, that's gonna be an issue. This is review, and this is in the current plan, "Review of existing planning initiatives revealed several projects that are ongoing. The Stones River Gateway Phase 4 is under development and is currently in the right-of-way acquisition phase." And that's the issue that, or the situation that Dave McCurry is in now. And this is just, it's pointing out that it's from Barfield Road to Barfield Crescent Park, and that's where he lives. And I've been out to his house, and I've been up to the State House with Mr. McCurry and testified in front of our legislators about strengthening the property rights laws when it comes to eminent domain and how eminent domain happens. Says the cost estimates presented here do not include right-of-way acquisition costs. "There are many avenues to acquire greenway, greenway rights of way, with the first and most obvious being a fee simple acquisition. Fee simple acquisition results in the direct ownership of real property is the most complete form of land ownership." Now, that's a lot of sentence just to say, hey, for us to be able to access greenway right-of-way, we're gonna use eminent domain. And it's funny that the term eminent domain never came up in this document, but if you're a citizen in the city of Murfreesboro, or not, you don't even have to be a citizen, says currently, "There's approximately 19 and a half miles of bike lanes, 14.2 miles of signed bike routes within the study area. All of the bike lane miles and 45% of the bike route miles are within the city limits." Now, I highlighted that because that also suggests there's a 55% of those bike routes that don't travel through city limits. They're outside the city, they're in the county. And I wonder if Dave, Mr. McCurry were here today and saying, hey, I have a complaint about you guys taking my property for a bike route, I'd like to get some satisfaction, or I'd like to at least plead my case. You would, could, technically, you could legally refuse to even let him speak because he does not live in the city of Murfreesboro. He lives in the county of Rutherford County. But I couldn't figure out how the city had the right to go out and take someone's property in the county, and that's what's happening now. So when you look at this house that he built 28 years ago, it took him 18 years to put together that stone wall, he did it by hand, I understand that the former director came to his house one day because he had called and said, I heard about this, this master bike plan that's coming out. This is back in 93, and that whoever, I don't know who the director was, I'm not impugning him, but he did come out and suggest that one day that house would make a great parks and rec facility. So how many people will lose their land or access if we build 173 miles of bike paths and greenways and blueways? Especially the greenways, because the greenways go out through people's property, it goes out through the country. So you have to think, every one of you here, if you live in the city limits or you're somewhere close, you might be getting a knock on, on your door saying, hey, by the way, we're gonna take your property because this greenway's such a great deal, right? It might be a different type of consideration. How much will it cost the average home buyer? I'm gonna talk a lot more about cost here in just a minute. How would a city pay for this? Or really, how will we, as a taxpayers, be able to afford this? So if we take a look and say, what about safety, because I looked at that as well, this is from the 2009 bike and ped study, shows the number of miles of each county in the MPO. Of course, Davison has the most, and then Rutherford is a close second in number of miles. And then if we look at the next graph, this is the number of bike crashes that happened, and obviously Davison County has the most crashes, and they also have the most mileage. It seems to me, and we're, we're there at a close second between us and Robertson County. It seems to me, the more miles that we, what we put out for bike paths, the more accidents and injuries, and even possibly deaths. If you remember back in early February, we just had a bicyclist killed crossing the road in Murfreesboro. And then I saw at the very end of the last sentence, got my attention, it says, "Police said there were, had nine fatal crashes the year before." Bicycle crashes, fatalities. I think if we add, you know, I don't know, five times the number of miles, we're gonna incur much more of that type of activity. This is the police report from calls made about different issues on just the greenway, and this is just one year. So there's lots of issues about whether we hear, I hear comments about, well, you know, the greenway is like a criminal superhighway. It's a great way to go mug someone and get away on your bike. I don't know how often that might happen, but it is something to consider. The other thing is, is it really necessary to have 173 miles of bike ways? I like bikes, but I also like racquetball. And if we're gonna compare the same kind of growth in the racquetball facilities, we would have to build six or seven racquetball facilities to equal the kind of growth that we're gonna have in bike paths and blueways and greenways. Connecting, this is the purpose of the greenway. Greenways are used for recreation, transportation, therapy, education. The result of each of these uses a connection. Connecting people to nature is becoming more difficult as our natural environment is encroached upon by development. I'm about to point out some of the conflicts that I see that are, the goals are diametrically opposed. Typically, people want to live and enjoy the natural environment every day. They're surrounded by nature, they need to be surrounded by nature, et cetera. So we need to build these greenways and blueways to be able to allow people to do that. But right below it, it says, "Connecting nature to nature is also vital aspect of greenways. Small islands of forests remain in Murfreesboro. Linear corridors along streams and rivers connect many of these islands and habitat. As development in Murfreesboro continues to encroach on these natural environment, fewer areas are available for wildlife." So this is what we need to do. We need to preserve wildlife and the habitat, right? So what we need to do is build 10 to 16-foot-wide paved roads along our streams and rivers, and somehow, that's gonna preserve nature and the habitat and the plants and the animals. And as you can see in the photograph, they paved that road, and this is in the middle of nowhere, next to a stream, and they're gonna cut, and they're gonna take out the natural vegetation and plant grass, you notice there's grass there, and they're gonna clear out at least 15 feet beyond each side of that greenway, and they're gonna trim the trees. We're basically producing an artificial tourist attraction that has nothing to do with nature or preserving nature or plants or animals. And plus, a lot of them have fences up along, as well. "The city of Murfreesboro has 12 miles of paved asphalt trails located along the Stones River and Lidle Creek." That's what we have already, 12 miles that we're basically ripping up along our streams, our rivers, Stones River. I don't see how that is considered environmentally productive or... I don't see how that is considered environmentally productive or an enhancement. And we're asking to do sixty-seven more miles of greenway. Typically following, as a matter of fact, if you see the rest of that sentence, it follows along most of the rivers and, and streams to do that. So, again, I ask, is this necessary? We keep seeing, if you read the actual plan, I don't know if you've read the full plan, it's several hundred pages, I've read every bit of it, and I've read the Nashville Metropolitan Planning Organization's bike study path, I've read every bit of the county's comprehensive plan and studied it. I don't think there's anybody that knows it better than me, maybe except for the people who wrote it, and even then, I stumped a lot of them on what was in the plan. And I'm not trying to be braggadocious, I'm just saying, I'm concerned about this, and so I did my homework. In 1990, a study in the U.S. Department of Transportation established that ninety percent of work trips and eighty-four percent of utilitarian trips taken by bicyclists were two miles or less. So, if we're going to, if we're going to suggest that this is a great alternative transportation, which is what is, is, is alluded to throughout the plan, really, it doesn't make sense, because if most people are taking less than two miles, why do we need a hundred and seventy-three miles? Most people are going to get on and get right back off, and it seems like a lot of money being focused on one resource or one recreational activity. The 1990 study in Denver, Colorado, found that the mean bicycle trip was two point one miles. Although the number of bicycles have risen, the trip distance has remained relatively consistent at approximately two miles. So, it seems like we already have plenty of mileage for bicyclists to take advantage of. We want to promote, this is the two big objectives, promote the increased usage of existing greenways, which suggests to me that they're not used enough. And then, the next big objective is present strategies leading, leading towards a transformational attitude of Murphy Borough's residents and workers, in which active transportation is regarded as a viable option, viable travel option for all. That doesn't make sense compared to the 1980 study that says that most people don't go much more than two miles on their bicycle. Why would we want to try to change the total attitude of our city for the sake of a self-fulfilling prophecy to say, this is a great activity for our city? Establishing natural corridors can be as simple as acquiring land. This, however, is not as simple as it sounds. Purchasing natural land from private landowners can be expensive and time-consuming, but rewarding process. Immeasurable benefits are gained from this acquisition. Plants and animals are provided a place to live and reproduce. I'm really almost offended that our government would think that their job is to help plants and animals reproduce. It doesn't make sense to me. We have much bigger fish to fry and lots of other challenges I think we need to focus our time, especially our resources on. Create promotional materials to promote walking and bicycling as safe, healthy, cost-effective, environmentally beneficial transportation choice. I get it, if you're not in a car, you're not polluting with the car, all right? We might want to take a, a look further on. To foster more of a transportation emphasis, implementation of a plan towards its listed objective can focus on community benefits such as environmental impacts of travel, lower personal transportation costs, et cetera. Transportation equity, I'm not sure what that means. But if I were to guess, based on all my research on the county plan and the Office of Sustainable Communities, which is a joint effort between EPA, FHA, and the Federal Trade Transit Authority, I would guess that they're saying that there's not enough bicycles, there's too many cars, and we need less cars and we need more bikes. This fellow, he has a different take. As cyclists, a cyclist has an increased heart rate and respiration. That means that the act of riding a bike results in greater emissions of carbon dioxide from the rider. Since CO2 is deemed a greenhouse gas and a pollutant, bicycles are actually polluting when they ride. So, maybe we need a bicycle tax for pollution. It says, this is from our plan here, "Progressive cities across the nation," and there's a, there could be a great big debate about what progressive cities means. "Have long realized the close ties to economic development of their city and the quality of life offered. Our neighboring city, Nashville, recognizes the benefits of greenways, and they say that they publish, 'It seems difficult to conceive of a more efficient way to accomplish so many desirable objectives.'" I don't know about you, but we're one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation. I think Nashville's one of the fastest-shrinking cities. I don't know that many people who want to stay in Nashville. They come down here to Murfreesboro, they go to Franklin, or they go to Hendersonville or Mount Juliet. They get out of the major cities. And I don't know that greenways makes that much of a difference to do that.
Mr. Robinson, you've been about twenty-five minutes now, and I'm sure there may be other speakers, and I don't want to limit your presentation
Sure.
...because it's certainly a lot of information. If you would, I'll, if you
Give me about seven
... others who, who want to speak.
Sure.
If, if you don't mind, would you mind limiting just to the bikeways and to the greenways and to the
Sure.
...blueways? And try to finish up so we have other speakers
I think I can give about five more minutes or less. Thank you.
Good.
All right. Currently, the region, and this is from
I mean, I think I've got the sense of what you're talking about, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I'm going to get to the cost, though, I think
And there may be others who would like to do the same thing.
Sure. All right, let's move on then.
A conclusion would be good.
Okay, I'm going to conclude right here. What about costs? This is out of our plan today. We have sixty-seven point three miles suggested, greenways and greenway connectors, at a cost of sixty-seven million dollars. That's a million dollars a mile. That's a lot of money. And we add up all of the roadways of the bike, bike paths that we want to produce out of this plan, comes to a hundred and four million dollars. I just can't think of anybody that thinks that's a sensible amount of money to spend on bikeways and, and parkways. And it has an asterisk there, it says, "Planning level construction cost only. This does not include the right-of-way acquisitions," which we've got to go buy those, because people are going to have to give up their land for those greenways. It doesn't include the utility relocation, we're going to have to move telephone poles, et cetera, or the preliminary, preliminary engineering costs. I'd like to, I'd like to estimate, I'd like somebody to be able to estimate what that might cost, maybe another twenty or thirty million? And out of the 2009 study, they said that the MPA's Long Range Transportation Plan, there would be a funding gap of approximately seventeen million annually for their entire area. That's two times, over two times the current funding levels. In other words, they have a sufficient gap in funding. And this comes from our current plan. Given that the average city-funded capital expenditures budget for parks and recs over the last four years is approximately a hundred twenty thousand a year, even with federal greenway allocations subtracted, is quickly evident that a different funding strategy will be required. In other words, we can't afford these, this grand plan. You go through the details, you can see all of the upkeep and maintenance, this is just for the blueways, there's something similar for the greenways, where there's mowing and removal of graffiti and repair and et cetera, upkeep, trash removal, et cetera, it's going to add up. Just the signage alone, just for bikes, is humongous. And some of the challenges, land dedicated for the right-of-way is land that cannot be included in development calculations and therefore costly to developers and landowners. So, each time you require a developer to, to put in a bike path, he's got to take away area that he could build a house on. He's going to build fewer houses and have to charge more, and it's going to cause our cost of housing to rise in our city. Sidewalk, sidewalk, bicycle, and pedestrian pathways add development costs and can receive resistance from the community. I'm just going to skip that for time. My last three slides, what about the moral hazard? How can we, in good conscience, I know that one of the arguments was going to be, would, Mr. Robinson, a hundred and eight, a hundred and four million dollars, we're not going to spend that much, man, that's over twenty-five years, and it's a plan, and we, we're probably not going to do all of that, and we're going to get a lot of federal grant money, eighty to ninety percent of it. So, eighty to ninety million will come from the federal government. We still are on the hook for ten to twenty million, but that's still not good enough for me. What is the moral hazard of us standing by when our federal government hasn't passed a budget in four years and spends one trillion dollars more every single year than they take in? And we're going to, we're going to contribute to that and say, yes, give us some of that borrowed money from China so we can build some recreational bike paths down here. No matter whether it comes out of our personal city budget or comes out of the federal budget, it comes out of our pockets as taxpayers. And we would like to see our city officials take a leadership position and become aware and cognizant of the economic chaos, the morass that we're in. If, is this the legacy we want to leave our children? When economic chaos is going on, are they going to look back and say, we were rearranging the deck chairs on the economic Titanic for our recreational pleasure? I would ask you to please consider moving forward on this master plan without making it a grand plan. I would prefer that if somebody wants to build a greenway, that they come to you each time and say, here's the cost, here's what we want to do, and then prove where they can get the money, and you guys vote on it. If you publish, if you approve this plan tonight, you will put, almost galvanize this grand plan, and somehow or another, the money is going to get spent on bike paths and, and greenways, when we need money to pay, to do other things that are much more important. So, I ask you to make that consideration and vote no on this plan.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
So, Mayor and Council, I'm Kent Seiler, I'm a resident of Murfreesboro, and I'm also the Chair of the Greenways Committee.
Your address.
I'm two-nine-two-two, Longford Drive, Mayor. And what I, you know, Joseph mentioned being a young city planner in the early nineties, I was a young congressional aide at the time, and, and, you know, if you look at Murfreesboro's population back in 1990, when we started working on these projects, we were less than half than we are now, and that's less than twenty-five years ago. So, this plan takes us twenty-five years into the future. And who knows, you know, if we keep the, you know, the current rate of growth, you're looking at a city potential of a quarter of a million people. The goal in the early nineties was to preserve the quality of life for a growing city, to find ways to keep this a vibrant city, a city that, where it was nice to live, nice to visit. And over the last twenty years, you know, I want to say, people have voted with their feet, they voted with their bicycles, and they voted with their baby carriages. You go out on the greenway, you look at the citizens, you look at them using it. They voted for the, in the Ruthies, look at the number one or number two places to exercise and that, that every year. You know, I have, I've been involved in a lot of projects, few that I've been involved with have been this popular. You know, every time I know a lot, a lot of you, every time before I go visit another city or go look at a hotel or whatever, I call up TripAdvisor. I did that before I came over tonight. You call up TripAdvisor for the top attractions in Murfreesboro? The greenway's number three, from Asheville, North Carolina, one of the nicest greenways you will find in any American city. So, it's been a project that has been embraced, it came from the ground up here locally in our community, and it has had the, it has had, you know, it's been a project that has had the support of the citizens. As we go forward, it's important that we have a plan. This plan does not commit the council, the government, anyone else to spend any money. What we're doing is looking at where are we going to go as we go forward. It's good government. It's basically citizens coming together at government, at its most basic level, the city level, to decide for themselves what they want their community to look like in twenty-five years. Greenways are a part of it, blueways are a part of it, bikeways are a part of it. And we've had five different opportunities. This is the fifth, for individuals to come and give us comments to let us know how they feel about it. The previous four meetings, we've had absolutely no negative comments. We've advertised it very well. This is the Daily News Journal with a full page of me talking about the importance of coming out to the January ninth Planning Commission hearing. We did a, the Daily News Journal taped me inviting people to come out and speak. The plan has been on the Daily News Journal website, I'm sorry, on the city of Murfreesboro website from us now. So, we have tried to involve the public, we've asked for as much input as we could possibly get, and I urge you tonight to move forward with this plan, please.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
I'm Robert Barkley, I live at two-fifteen North University, and I came to Tennessee from Chicago in nineteen seventy-six. So, I've seen this place grow. I also happened to start riding a bicycle in nineteen ninety-eight. In nineteen ninety-eight, I realized that we have some of the best cycling, the most gorgeous country in really the world, right here in middle Tennessee, and it is a crown jewel that needs to be preserved. Now, normally, I am opposed, very opposed, to the government spending money unnecessarily. However, this is exactly the kind of plan that the government should be involved in because private sector is not going to provide it. How do we value our lifestyle enhancement of having access to the greenway? And contrary to a lot of people who only ride their bikes two miles at a time, I put about three thousand miles a year on a bicycle, at least, probably more now, because I just had both hips fixed and they're ready to roll. There were four friends of mine, the oldest was seventy-three, two were sixty-eight, and I was a youngster at fifty-eight. We had four hips, three knees, a heart attack, a stroke, and we got around thirty miles in under two hours. So, I think that speaks well to the health aspects of it. On the other hand, we had a young man who happened to have a bicycle that was killed walking across the street. So, he was technically a pedestrian, and he was in good shape because he was coming from a triathlon training session. So, it's not like some fifty-eight-year-old man with bad hips trying to get across the street. This was a young kid in good shape that got nailed. If we have the bikeways and the greenways, it is an enhancement to our lifestyle. And for that reason, I ask you that you do it.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
Good evening, I'm David LaRache, seventeen-twenty-eight Walking Drive here in Murfreesboro. I grew up in Murfreesboro, right on the Stones River. I remember how excited I was when the Thompson Lane Trailhead was opening, and as a teenager without a car, how cool I thought it was going to be to ride my bike to Dodge a store and get fried chicken. I live on the north side of town now, and it looks like the plan is going to bring some of the greenway out to some of the, some of the drainage in my area. There's already bike paths on Last Cassis. When I was away in college and law school and I was coming back to Murfreesboro, trying to decide to come back to Murfreesboro, I knew I was going to have a new wife in tow, and I knew we were going to have children down the road, which we do now. And I was trying to convince my wife, you know, why Murfreesboro is going to be a great place for us to start our family, and I was able to mention NTSU, a fine institution, I was able to mention our new hospital. And I remember vividly telling her that the greenway was such a cool thing, and it was so emblematic of the community we have here and the progress we are making as a community. And that was why I wanted to come back to Murfreesboro and not stay in Nashville, and not go to another bigger city. Whatever cost this may have, I strongly believe are going to be offset by economic development for people like me who come into town, start small businesses and hire people, knowing that Murfreesboro cares about the community. And so, I urge the council to pleasing knowledge the great work that this, that this committee did, putting together this plan, and also want to ask you guys to pass this tonight on the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
My name's Michael Bonham at eleven-twelve Sunny Crest Court. Just want to hit a few short points, urging you guys to pass this, so we can develop more greenways and bike paths. I'm an avid cyclist, I race with a team that in Chattanooga. I'm out of town a lot, I'm a pilot, I'm out of town a lot, and I still manage to put five, six thousand miles on my bike every year. I love doing it, among other outdoor sports, hunting, kayaking. I love doing it, among other outdoor sports, hunting, kayaking, fishing. Things like the blueways will give us a lot more access to the Stones River when water levels are up to be, or in some places even when they're down, still be able to kayak, canoe, which is something we can't do right now. Bike lanes, especially separated bike lanes. You mentioned earlier in an argument that you have an increase in accidents with an increase in number of bike lanes. That's probably because you have a lot more cyclists on the road. I want to touch on three different studies, one in New York City, one in Seattle, Washington, and one in Portland, Oregon, that showed a direct decrease in cycling-related accidents, especially when they were separated or buffered bike lanes. So you have a bike lane, then parallel parking of cars are immediate, and then the street. In New York City, their last phase of bike lanes that went in, they also installed about 100 miles of bike lanes along those streets. Some of these buffered, and they showed a 59% decrease in cycling accidents and fatalities from the beginning of that two-year project. The cost increase, the next thing I want to hit is some of the costs. The cost increase of housing, or the cost increase of housing for putting sidewalks in neighborhoods, they don't take up that much space. Personally, for me, I've got a wife, two young daughters. If I'm going to live in a neighborhood, if I'm going to buy a house, I want there to be sidewalks. I want there to be, you know, a safe place where I can have my daughters go to their friend's house around the corner and not have to worry about I'm getting hit by a car. You know, to be able to play outside on the sidewalk and not have to worry about it. You just heard it from this gentleman that stood up. One of the things that makes Murfreesboro so attractive is our greenway, is these, are these recreational, I guess, tools that we have, you know, the greenways, the bike lanes, whatnot. It's one of my favorite things about Murfreesboro. A lot of times, because I'm riding at a higher, when I'm racing, I'm riding at a higher speed, I'm not on the greenway, I'm on the roads. Having a bike lane, a shoulder that I can be over and ride on, helps me feel much better about my safety. But a lot of times, too, with the greenway, I'll get out with my family, I'll go ride, you know, the kids, my youngest daughter is three, she's on her first bike now. I've got a nine-month-old at home, it's in this stroller, and it's a lot easier, the neighborhood that I'm in right now does not have sidewalks. And we go to the greenway because we feel it's a much safer place, it's fun, walking and along, and riding along the river to ride on. And it gets us a place to experience nature within the city, lots of deer, lots of rabbit, all sorts of wildlife along the trail. And as you heard before, when, when you look at a lot of places, a lot of cities that people are looking to live, live in, or where to move to, you know, something like a greenway makes it much more marketable, or much more attractive to people to move to. Murfreesboro is one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, and I can, I can honestly say that things like the greenway and investing in our infrastructure, investing in community, investing in a healthier lifestyle for everyone is a huge part of that. If you look at areas like Brentwood, Brentwood has a lot of bike lanes, Brentwood, Brentwood has a lot of paths. It's a very wealthy area. They do have higher taxes, but you look at the type of people that live there, they're wealthier individuals, they're younger individuals, and they are attracted to Brentwood because of things like this. This is something that we can develop and, and bring into Murfreesboro to attract more people, more small business, and more wealth, which is a higher tax base. As far as the cost, I don't know if, if many of you look at the numbers, but he brought it before, that total cost of, for the next 25 years, our estimated cost of implementation of the greenways, bike paths, and, and blueways is $104 million. It's a lot of money. It is. But if you look at it over the course of 25 years, that's only about $4 million a year. If you offset that with federal grants and federal funding, there's really not, it's not that bad. If you look at the number, or the amount of money right now, on current road projects just in the city of Murfreesboro, they amount to over $238 million. Of that, the city is responsible for $140 million. So $4 million a year, to me, does not sound like a lot to invest in health, fitness, community, all the other benefits you'll get out of the greenway system. So, again, I'd urge you to, to definitely vote forward and to move forward with the greenway system plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
My name is Jay Jackson, and I reside at 124 Wyndham Cove in Murfreesboro. I'm also a partner at Mitchell Mitchell Law Firm. I'm here, just off the square, and I wanted to, first, this plan is an unbelievably well-done document. It's just incredible, the amount of work, thoughtfulness that was put into the plan is quite impressive, and I wanted to mention that. I just wanted to bring out a couple of things. I'm on that greenway four, five days a week, and let me tell you, I run. That's all I do on the greenway, is I just run, I don't ride my bike or anything on there. But let me tell you what I see. I see families with small kids, I see people going, using the greenway as transportation to get to and from work. I see people coming there, putting canoes in at the old Nashville Road, taking them over all the way down to the Thompson Line, Thompson Lane area. I see couples walking, strolling, talking. I see dads and daughters walking and talking. I see families spending time with one another. And it's, to me, the greenway may be one of the greatest things that this city has ever done, at least since I've been alive. If I think back since 1968, when I was born, it is without question one of the best things that I've ever seen this city do. And the plan that's been offered, to me, personally, probably, in my opinion, doesn't go far enough. I'd like to see you spend more money and put more miles of greenways in there. I think that every dollar you spend on these greenways is well worth it. And one of the things I want to point out is that this is not like a racquetball court where private companies can come in, they can set up racquetball courts, and they can offer it for fee, or whatever the case may be. A greenway system is a fundamentally, the government is the only person, the only entity that can actually create this type of system. If government doesn't create this kind of system, it won't exist. It won't be here. And so if we look at what some of the fundamental purposes of government is, I think this may be one of the primary purposes, taking and providing recreation opportunities for so many people that live in the city, and others that live outside the city, I know use it quite a bit also. So I think it's a great plan, it's a great idea. I encourage you not only to adopt it, to spend every dime that's recommended, and more, and look at ways to expand it even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Member of the City Council, my name is Mark Pertle, and I live at 318 North Thompson Lane. I'm about a quarter of a mile from the North Thompson Lane Trailhead, and I've lived at that location since the greenway was built. I think that master planning is a responsibility of our elected officials. I think it's most needed in business planning. But when I look, being a commercial real estate developer, when I look at where I might consider investing my money in this community, I always look at the master plans for the roadways. I know if there's plans for roadways, there's going to be plans for sewer, there's going to be plans for schools, there's going to be plans for residential developments that are going to support commercial development. So I applaud you for having the foresight to master plan, and all of these are very, very important, whether it be schools, 20-year plan for schools, 25-year plan for roads. But for the greenway and the blueways, and a blueway is a new term, and it's a term that we need to endure to our community because we don't have a lot of lakes, but we surely have the Stones River, and we need to make that resource available to our citizens. Another thing is that the greenways and the blueways, they're, they're a great recreation opportunity, as Mr. Jackson has said, for our people from all walks of life. My wife and I have walked, and I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, I don't run, but I have walked the greenway many, many times. I live a quarter of a mile, Mayor, but I get in my car and I drive down and park in the parking lot because I think it's much safer and much wiser to drive there, and to get in an environment where I know that I'm going to be safe. I've never seen anybody killed on a bicycle on the greenway, I've never seen a pedestrian run over and killed, I've never seen a stroller hit, but it's a, it's a wonderful place, and it's a sense of community. There's a true sense of community. You have a responsibility to create recreational opportunities to the citizens, and this has been proven to be a wonderful, well-received way. Besides being safe, it's also attractive to new employers. I had the opportunity to speak at MTSU last Thursday to our very bright students, which I truly enjoy, but 80% of the people that are receiving their degrees at MTSU want to remain right in Middle Tennessee. And the younger generation, and I'm certainly not a member, as can be witnessed by my hair, but they're looking strongly at the quality of life that our community is going to provide. And one of the things that they want is a good job, and we have a wonderful university that creates around 3,000 graduates every year, and they're looking for jobs, and they want to stay in this area. Over 80% of them raised their hand and said, "Yes, we want to stay in this area." But a job is expected, a job commensurate with their training, and one of the things that the young folks do, and you can look at the skinniest person in, on the commission, that's Mr. McFarland, followed by Mr. Gillie, they're both very, very avid sportsmen, and the younger generation believes in exercise. So I'm really confused at some of the statements that have been made tonight about bicycle deaths or accidents are up. I believe in the last 30 years, I've had two friends killed on bicycles, and they were on the roads. So anything that we can do to get skaters, walkers, bikers onto trails where there is not traffic only makes sense. This is a master plan. I feel so strongly about master planning and about the total things that are important to our citizens. I've donated property back to you, Mr. Mayor, that you kindly charged me for, and I give it back to you for free, to bring the, bring the, bring the greenway over to the gateway. Because I know that it's going to be an employer, an important recreation opportunity to people who will be leasing my buildings or buying my land. I've given property back to the city of Laverne for a greenway, and I feel like it's my civic responsibility. If I'm going to make a living here, then I need to contribute to the quality of life here. I strongly urge you to consider continuing in your master planning plans, and I'm very much in support of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I had a fellow in the back there that's had the yo-yo up and down a couple of times, so...
My name is Jacob Bogal. I live at 205 Warrior Drive. Quick point, anytime government uses money, whether it's local money or federal grants, by definition, they're taking money from someone else. Now, in the past, I used to use the greenway pretty much every day, walk it for hours at a time. But as time went on, I started noticing issues, I started having people tell me about some problems, and it got to a point where I myself no longer felt safe, and so I quit going on a regular basis. A few months ago, the Daily News Journal ran a story of a woman just jogging during the day in a residential area that had a greenway built, and was sexually assaulted. A few weeks ago, I went to O'Fort Park and the greenway there, and, you know, this is one of the most visited areas in the city. And the greenway looks nice, but if you step off the greenway and you look a few feet, there's used condoms, there's drugs, there's homeless encampments that have been made that are not supposed to be there. And in fact, I have a picture here that I'll show the council of four hypodermic needles right off the greenway there at the park. Do you want me to bring this up to you, or?
Well, I think we'll take your word.
Okay. And, you know, my question is, if you can't adequately keep the small areas that we do have safe, what makes you think that we should go and build hundreds of miles of additional, especially when they're going to radiate out of the city, which naturally have less of a police presence? And so that's a really big concern of mine, and I know a lot of other people have felt the same way, and have stopped using the greenway for that, for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is April Harrell. I live at 7518 Greenway Drive. I'm in the county. Thank you for allowing me to come up here. Just let you know, I may get emotional. This is very dear to my heart. All of these topics are. I have a long line of politics in my family heritage, six presidents, and whenever you're dealing with the federal government, you have to be very careful. A lot of this money is going to come from federal government. And as the man here who gave us a 30-minute presentation, which was awesome, and very on track, he has got his information correct, he is very knowledgeable and knows what he's talking about. You get government money, government's going to own it, okay? TVA is owned by federal government. Eminent domain is actually illegal, okay? President Washington signed the Constitution, and the Constitution does not show that eminent domain is legal. In fact, federal government is not supposed to deal with our land. This is state land. It's, it's, it's supposed to be separate. I talked to Angela Jackson earlier today. I called the office and wanted to know a little bit more information. I just found out about this meeting. This is the first one I've ever been informed about, and I want to thank you for having it on a Thursday night when most people who would like to be here and object to this cannot be here because their middle school students are having their first band concert. So there's many, many people who are not here tonight because of that. Where can I go from here? A lot of this has to do with sustainable development, Agenda 21 by the United Nations. This was inputted and signed by Bush, which is one of my cousins, and, and then, of course, Clinton, who also turned around and signed a little later to expand all of this. I don't know how to go into this anymore than, we can't allow our money to be coming from the federal government, as he said, federal government can't support us, they can't support themselves. And if we can't support the greenway as the city of Murfreesboro, then we shouldn't expand it. If we can't pay for ourselves, why? That's like being like all, a lot of the American citizens in this nation who have credit cards and go, "Oh, well, I'm going to have a paycheck, you know, a month from now. I can spend all the money I want to right now because I'm going to have it a month from now." And two weeks down the road, they get fired, and they can't pay their bills. Stock market is going to crash again in the next few years. You guys may not be aware of that. A lot of people don't pay attention to what's going on. And somebody made a comment, I think it was Mr. Edel, made the comment about how all these people are voting for these plans, and they think it's all this great stuff. And granted, I think the greenway is, is kind of neat. I've been there twice since I've lived here in six years, but you got people voting for things when they don't really know the real details and what it's all going to come down to. And the map that showed these great, big, huge bicycle paths to all these different counties, especially going into Nashville, may end up becoming, under the transportation through the federal government, may end up becoming railways in order to get completely rid of our cars and transport us from the different counties into Nashville where all the businesses are and most of the jobs. A lot of people are driving far distances. I mean, far, my husband lives, works in Nashville for TVA, and we're paying our house payment for him to go to work and gas. That's kind of irate. And it's just going to get worse. So, I mean, really, really seriously think about this, because you're taking more money from the federal government who doesn't have any, they're printing money, and they don't have anything to back it up. They're printing money, and they don't have anything to back it up. To me, to do this right now and the amount of money that's going to be spent out, to me, seems really immature. I don't know what else to say, really. People need to do their background checking, find out about their congressman, find out what's going on in the government, look things up. To do this would be just irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Jim Sandman. I live at two nineteen Declaration Drive out in the county in Les Casas. But for eleven years, I was in Murfreesboro on Gold Valley Drive. I don't think that Mr. Robinson is against fund or recreation or biking. We're just concerned about where the money will come from. And the idea of funding from the federal government with all the strings attached is a concern with, I guess, for those that listen to Dave Ramsey, we're like, you don't buy something unless you have the money for it. We should do that more often. So that's a concern, just the idea of paying for some, trying to pay and planning things when the money's not there yet. I like one of the quotes that Mr. Reagan gave, Ronald Reagan, "If it moves, tax it. If it keeps moving, regulate it. If it stops moving, subsidize it. Or if it never tried to move, I guess, throw grant money at it or something." So there's a concern for too much federal government involvement in that sense. The only other concern that I wanted to bring up tonight, just briefly, is the, like the lady said earlier, the, I was just in Franklin here earlier today and gave a talk. And one of the citizens over there mentioned the bike paths along, I believe it was Hillsborough Pike. And they held, they didn't see them utilized, very rarely saw folks utilizing them. I'm sure a lot of money went into that to get that, but it doesn't seem to be cost-efficient. Again, we're not against fund and biking and recreation. I use the Greenway. I've run it several times. I love jogging as well. But we have to be able to afford it. And then, a couple of websites I went to talk about bike paths in Chicago, for instance. And this website, it says, "Chicago Likes Bikes," and it's about to prove it in a big way. And it says, "Today, the city's bike-loving mayor, Rahm Emanuel, will unveil the Streets for Cycling Plan 2020, an aggressive bicycling blueprint that was a year in the making. With thirty miles of protected bike lanes already completed and another seventy promised before the end of Emanuel's first term in 2015, the city's new cycling infrastructure will weave through every neighborhood, assuring a path within a half mile of every Chicagoan's home." Now, this little article about Chicago Bike Paths is from the website of the International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLI, of which Nashville and Franklin were members in the past, but they're not members now. But this is an international, non-governmental organization. This is help, they help promote the sustainable development ideas with bikeways and federal grant money that they just can throw around because they can print it or borrow it. And the other similar article from Carowal, Pennsylvania, talking about bike paths, is from the ICLI website, icliusa.org. So I was just concerned about those two things mainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you've already spoken, so let's let others who have not spoken. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Luke Namath. I live on Barfield Road, two-six-nine-six. I have three pieces of property along Barfield Road that are being taken for the Greenway. And I am just here to specifically address the city's use of eminent domain regarding this project. I have, I have here three appraisals for three different parcels of property. And they're embarrassingly low. They're significantly lower than even than the county tax assessor has appraised them at. It seems to me that the cities, the city may be using eminent domain as a primary source of acquisition rather than as a last resort. I know that people here have questioned whether it's legal. It's clear to me that it is legal at this time in this country, in this county. But it shouldn't be used without great restraint. And I understand that the city has a lot of, a lot of different moving parts, and they trust that each one's doing their job. But I ask that the city council specifically look into the way that the appraisals are being done and the way that landowners are being compensated for their property. I understand that they believe that they're hiring objective appraisers, but I've met with those appraisers in person, and I know that they're not objective. They sound like they work for the city. They've told me that my land is worth nothing, and they've appraised it as such. One of my parcels of property is 1.6 acres. It includes over three hundred feet of a historic stone wall, over two hundred trees that are landscaped, mulched. The property is mowed. I keep it maintained. I use it as a water source for irrigation and livestock. I have piping infrastructure in place. There's a concrete bridge that crosses the river, which I think is the reason that the Greenway is even coming over to my side of the river. And I have, I have a lot of nice color photos of that property here. But in the appraisal, in the appraisal, they said this land was worth a thousand dollars, 1.6 acres along the river. And they included a couple of pretty bad photos. One of them is the slope on the side of the road. And the other one is a photo of my neighbor's property that's not mine, that's overgrown with some underbrush. Whereas mine is maintained, I spent at least ten thousand dollars on land clearing machines coming in and cleaning up the property when I bought it over seven years ago. So I would just ask that the city consider the fact that the council has a responsibility also to look at how they're operating. I understand there's a lot of enthusiasm for the project, and I understand that. But I ask that you look at how you're going about this and whether it's right to go in. And, you know, there's a lot of money being thrown around here from the government, eight hundred million dollars and so forth. I ask the council to consider whether all the departments in the city are doing their job, if they're getting back appraisals for a thousand dollars. And instead of negotiating with the landowner and giving them the courtesy and respect of looking at that property and considering what it really might be worth, instead just using eminent domain and taking it. So I just, I just ask that the city council consider those points.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the city council. My name is Misha Namath. I live at twenty-seven hundred Barfield Road. I own, that's my residence. I jointly own this 1.6 acre tract of land across from my property with my brother. Also own another piece of property, which the Greenway is coming through further down Barfield Road. I believe I'm the fourth person that owns property, Greenway property, that's spoken tonight. It's very easy for other people to say, we want the Greenway and we want to be able to enjoy other people's property. I'll tell a story about my great-grandfather, who was a land, owned a lot of land in Hungary years ago. My father told me his story, and basically, the Russians came in, and they said, what's ours is ours, and what's yours is now everybody's. And I think that my great-grandfather would roll over in his grave if he knew that the democracy in America was essentially doing the same thing, coming in and saying, well, the Stones River is a jewel. And it is, it's a jewel that we have here in Murfreesboro. But those of us that are fortunate enough to own property on the Stones River should not have it, should not be threatened with eminent domain and have it just taken from us so that it can be shared with everybody. It's simply not right. The eminent domain threat is the first card on the table during the negotiations. And I also think that it should be used with great restraint going forward. And we, I certainly understand that city employees do the best they can for the city's best interests. But it's the councilmen and the mayors that are supposed to look out for the public's best interests and the individuals in the community. I would ask that the eminent domain be taken off the table because it's unfair. The city's holding all the cards in that case and can come and take a beautiful piece of property which has a bridge on it. I own a bridge across the Stones River. There aren't very many people that can say that they personally own a bridge. And TDOT isn't giving any permits to individuals to build bridges. But we own a bridge with approximately 136 cubic yards of concrete and 12,000 pounds of steel in it. And it's been evaluated at zero. We also have, we also landscape our trees twice a year, bring in dump trucks full of mulch, and go, hire laborers and put a lot of work in to manicuring our own personal park. I don't go to the Greenway because I've developed my own personal park on the Stones River. And I don't want to socialize with other people that are on the Greenway. My sister-in-law had her vehicle broken into at the Old Fort entrance and had her diamond ring, which was an heirloom, a German-cut diamond heirloom from my grandmother, stolen out of her vehicle. So there is crime on the Stones River, Greenway, rather. So I think that, as I said, I think eminent domain should be taken off the table. Also, I'll take this opportunity to just talk about the, I'd ask the city, I know that the city's going to go forward with this, with the plan of continuing to implement Greenways and expand them. But I'd ask if the city would consider evaluating the current Greenway, drainage structures, and come up with a cost of bringing it up to city code, such as erosion control, check dams, catch basins that are washed out and are no longer in place. Would the city be willing to evaluate that and come up with a cost to bring those up to city code? Secondly, would the city council consider a stewardship plan for the, for the land that they own along the Stones River? The city owns, the city owns or is going to own more than half of all the waterfront property on the Stones River. With great ownership comes great responsibility. The Stones River is the jewel, not the Greenway. So if the city owns the land, what will, what sort of plans will the city implement in order to oversee that the Stones River is well taken care of? To see that the contractors that are hired to build the Greenway and to work on the Greenway tack down, tack down the dirt with seed and straw prior to, prior to heavy rains? I don't know how many times I've watched as thousands of pounds of soil has washed into the Stones River during the course of a city project because the contractor simply didn't care because he's working for the most powerful organization in the area. And I would also ask, I've, half a mile down from Interstate twenty-four was a twenty-foot-long piece of black corrugated pipe washed into the center of the river by fourteen inches in diameter, by twenty, by twenty feet long, that stayed there for years and was never cleaned up. And it just sat there in the middle of the river until finally the big flood came and washed it on down to Percy Priest Lake. So I'd ask that the, that the city consider a stewardship plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Danny Brandon. I live at twenty-three sixty-three Garrison Cove. Thank you for your time. Several people have talked about growth rate in Murfreesboro, and obviously, we all know that's just a matter of math, right? It has grown a lot. And a lot of people have suggested that's because of the Greenway. And I have to ask, is that really the reason that the city's growing? Nashville has more Greenway than we do. If it was truly because of the Greenway, it seems to me like they would be growing. And the other side is, are people really leaving Nashville to come to here because of a better Greenway? I just, that's just disingenuous to me to say that people moved here from Nashville because of our Greenway when we all say, okay, well, they have more Greenway than we do. So if my argument is that I'm moving to a Greenway, why would I move from a place that has a greater Greenway or a bigger Greenway than we do? So I just don't buy that argument. Personally, I think companies are coming here because we have great citizens. We have low tax rates. We have a very inexpensive power, electric, gas, so on and so forth. And those companies, when they come here, they bring people with them. So that's a lot of our, our growth, I think. And I also think that, like I said, one of the reasons they come here is the low taxes. And now, some folks would argue that's not the case. But I'm going to ask you a question. If that is not a big determining factor in why big companies come to this area, why do we, as a city, give them tax incentives to come? If they don't come here for lower taxes, then why do we even put that on the table? Because we do every time somebody shows up. How many million can we give them? So, I mean, it's just one of those things. The Greenway and growth, I don't think they have anything to do with each other. In fact, I think they're absolutely mutually exclusive. Is it nice? Yeah, I like it. My family likes it. But one of the things that tone seems to be, that we're suggesting tear it all up. I don't think anybody wants to see us take what we've already got away. Sure, keep it. Keep it maintained. I really like it. In fact, my preacher loves it. I know he does. He talks about it all the time. So it's not that I want to see it go away, but it's one of those things, is that really the motivation for people? And is it really driving the prosperity of Murfreesboro? I move my fifty-billion-dollar company here because of a Greenway? I don't think so. I don't think that has anything to do with it. We also talked about safety. It'll be safer. And guys, I'm like, I'm sure every one of you, I know you do, we all hate to see, open the paper, see on TV, somebody's gotten killed on a bicycle or any other way, anywhere in the city. I mean, it's terrible. We can't keep everyone safe at all times, unfortunately. But the reality of this thing is, if we do this, isn't the majority of the bike paths going to be on major highways? Can anyone answer that? Because I, that's my understanding. And I think you guys need to consider that. We're saying it's going to be safer because we're building these bike paths. Those bike paths are going to be on the highway, as they are right now. It'll be a bike lane? You can't tell me people can't get killed on a bicycle in a bike lane, because I know people get killed in cars in car lanes. So that is not going to be the thing. And then the final point I'll make is that with the Greenway and everything else, everything you do in life, it's one of those things, all things in moderation. Like I said, the bike path, the Greenway, I have no problem with them. I think they're fabulous. But are they so fabulous that we are willing to pave the entire city and make it all a Greenway? You say, well, that's exaggerated. It is. But I mean, if it's the absolute jewel of the city, then shouldn't we make the whole city a jewel? No, we shouldn't, right? You've got to have businesses, you've got to have houses, you've got to have schools, you've got to have a lot of things. The Greenway is a part of it. The bike path is a part of it. So we can't do that. And we get into this issue of when we want to build this thing. The next thing is where. And unfortunately, it seems like these folks right here happen to have the where. And I can tell you, I like it a lot. I don't like it enough to give up my house. Undoubtedly, they don't like it enough to give up their property. And Dave McCurry didn't like it enough to give up his, but he didn't get that opportunity. So I hope you, I strongly urge you to really consider the implications, and all of them, not just a few folks that want to... Not just a few folks that want to have an additional few miles of bike path, but everyone, because it's going to impact a whole lot of people. Some of them positively. For the folks that are big avid bike riders, I understand that. But there are other folks who are not. What about our elderly folks that can't get on a bicycle? My mom's in a wheelchair. She can't get on a bike. Taxes go up, possibly, for something she could possibly not ever use. So with that, I will, thank you very much for your time and hope you will strongly consider all the facts, not just one side.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is John Harney. I live at 6748 West Gum Road out in the county. And I'll have to admit, back in the early, late 80s, early 90s, when Bart Gordon and our friend here talked about bringing a gateway, greenway system, excuse me, to Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, I was very skeptical of it. I've lived on a farm most of my life and talking about doing this and creating a system along the river, and I really wondered if that would be beneficial or not. And I'll have to admit, I think it has been extremely beneficial for this community. I've been in and around residential and commercial development for a long time. And we have certainly benefited from the visionary plans that a lot of US leaders today, but a lot of the community leaders have done for the last several years in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And those plans are not only about the greenway, but about education, about infrastructure, about roads, about the quality of life, that I think the reason people come to Murfreesboro and Rutherford County is because the all-encompassing quality of life. And I think the greenway, just like our educational system, just like our job opportunities, are all part of what puts that together and makes a community that not only we want to see our children stay in, but we run into people on a daily basis that have moved here and love the quality of life that we have to offer. Now, it comes at a cost, and I'm certainly not for bigger government. I'm certainly for people being paid properly for their property if it is taken. Years ago, our family farm was divided by I-24. I grew up on Broad Street when every tractor-trailer between Nashville and Chattanooga went right down 41. And something needed to happen. And that vision was to create the interstate system, which has been a tremendous benefit for this country. And we have to have plans and we have to have long-range plans or else development and planning happens helterskelter. I appreciate the time that these committees and US leaders have taken to put this together, knowing that not one dime of this is funded yet. And certainly, that is a debate for another day. But I think this is another piece of the quality of life that we have in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And I appreciate the vision. I appreciate the opportunities that you give everyone in this community to speak and give their voice to be heard, not only here tonight, but all through the year and all variety of hearings that we have. Thank you for taking the time to examine every part of our quality of life we have here and continue to be visionaries. Because the places in this country that are falling apart is where there's been no vision or there was a vision that wanted implemented in a smart, effective manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak? Others, last chance? All right. And I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we will consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to adopt the greenways, blueways, and bikeways master plans. Any questions from the council? To the staff regarding anything you've heard tonight? We've had certainly a number of speakers and maybe more than we've had for several months anyway, so I've heard a lot of things. Mr. Washington?
Well, basically, a statement. It would bother me. I hope that the Parks and Recreation, whomever negotiates the land deals with the potential folks that are impacted by the, by the greenway. I would hope that we don't start with eminent domain first. That just cannot happen. I don't think it happens, but I'm not there, so I don't know. But I would certainly be talking to the partners, the partners that, that deal with that, to ensure that that is not the process that we take. I don't believe it is, but I, I, I want to make that statement, that that, I hope that is not the case, that, that, that's not the way to do business. I wouldn't want it to happen to me. And I certainly don't want it to happen to the good residents, whether you're in the county or city, Australia, I don't care. Imminent domain is a practice that governments are allowed to use. I know why. It's unfortunate that that is, has to happen. But in my 14, 15 years' experience and plus working with Milton's Electric, we do it for power lines and whatever. If it wasn't for that, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have what you have today, I can tell you that. It's painful, because the cost of doing business, but I would hope that, that should be the last resort. That's about all I got to say.
Other questions, comments?
Mayor, I just have a couple of comments.
Mr. McFarland?
Not necessarily on the, it ties into the gateway, but, you know, there's lots of comparisons between local government, and I'll say Murfreesboro, and the federal government. And the one thing that I could say, I love serving as a council member for Murfreesboro, and it's because it's not the federal government. We do have balanced budgets. Our debt went down $22 million last year from the prior year. Every year that I've sat on this council, I know that we have to go through and we have to sign off on a balanced budget. As a matter of fact, if, if I'm right, I think I can remember that we spent $8 million less than what we budgeted last year and added $4 million to our fund balance. And the one thing that I would want to remind to residents, I can't speak for the other council members, but I've sat up here with most everyone long enough to know that I don't think anyone up here likes debt. But we would have to have a tax rate so high to build a new school that people could not afford to live in Murfreesboro if we tried to do it straight out of cash. So I, I don't like debt, but, you know, if we were financing our debt and it took us 30 years to pay off a school as opposed to seven years or eight years, then that's a different situation. So, and that's coming from somebody, someone who's in, you know, an accountant. So I think that the one thing you have to look at, if we ever get to a situation that we can't pay our bills and that we can't, we can't follow the financial, financial stipulations and the financial boundaries that Mr. Lyons and we've all voted on, then that's a different situation. But we're not anywhere near that. And, and our debt's being retired at, at a quicker rate than what we're even showing on our books. So that's the one thing that I would want to, I'd want to post, you know, and just say to the residents of where we are financially, it's nowhere near what this, what the federal government is. The other one thing I would want to ask, that maybe Mr. Lyons would, one of the speakers on their presentation had highlighted that there were non-fatal accidents last year and had sort of insinuated that there were non-bicycle accidents last year. I maybe, I would just like to clarify the council on that, that I think it's non-motor vehicle fatalities or non-pedestrian fatalities, but I don't think it's non-bicycle fatalities. If you wouldn't mind finding out for us and let us know that.
I'll probably go ahead and update the numbers off the top of my head. That's vehicular fatalities. There may have been one or two that involved pedestrians, but we'll get those numbers for certain. But it was not non-fatalities on bicycles, no, sir.
Okay. That's, that's just the one thing that I saw pop out I'd like to have clarified for us.
Other comments?
I guess the, the one thing that we certainly don't want to make people believe is that we are opposed to the greenways. That they're wonderful amenities for our community. The Parks and Recreation Department that we have in Murfreesboro, I think is second to none. I serve on their board, and I'm a proud member of it. But, but I do recognize that there's so, so many nice things we have in Murfreesboro. We've got Patterson Park, we've got McKnight Park, we've got Sportscom, we've got Old Fort Park, the golf course, the, you know, and the list goes on and on. I mean, we've got wonderful facilities in Murfreesboro. The thing that, that's, I guess, maybe part of the hidden cost here is the maintenance and upkeep cost, that it's not just the initial cost of saying, we're going to buy it, we're going to build it, and we're done with it. I'm one who, I guess I would be called an infrequent greenway user, but I use it every few months. And I've, and I, and I use it regularly. I mean, every two or three months, I'm out there on the greenway. The, the one thing I don't find is that I've never gotten stuck in a traffic jam or, or tie-up of bicycles congested on the, the greenway. A mass of people just can't pass each other because it's so crowded. It's, it's, it's not a facility that is used all day long, 24 hours a day. And there's the, the concern with safety. I had asked the police chief to gather up some numbers for me not long ago on the greenway. And we've got a crime, and, and I'm not saying we have a rape out there every day, we don't. But, but we do have frequent crimes. I mean, they respond almost daily to a call that involves the greenway, whether it be a break-in of a vehicle, a, just a harassment-type situation or, or, you know. But, but we've got, we've got to continue to be responsible in, in how much can we service once we've built it? I think that to continue to build the greenway as Murfreesboro grows is responsible. I, I'm not completely opposed to any expansion of it, but I do find that the expansion that we're talking about here seems to be somewhat excessive. We can't count on the federal government to continue to give grants when they're operating in a deficit. We know that at some point, the reality has to strike them as well as it strikes us, that we can't continue to give away money that we don't have. And if, if, if they do, you know, I, I think the lady may be right. But, but, but at some point, I hope the reality sets in with our federal government that this money, we can't keep giving it back to them just so people will vote for us. I guess if I bring it back down to the local level and I look at Murfreesboro, I know that, you know, I guess I'm the doomsday guy up here kind of on the council because I'm always asking the, the city manager and our assistant city manager to please be conservative as possible because I just don't think the money's going to come in that is being forecasted. I had the same conversation with them this morning, and it was one of those "I told you so" moments. And, and truly, it was, it was, it's, it's not that I don't want us to spend money on the future of Murfreesboro, but we have to be realistic, and we have to be cognizant of the, the fact that we're still in, in tough economic times. The, and hopefully, the city will at some point have more money that's available to us to, to do these projects. But I just don't think, I think it's irresponsible to plan on building a swimming pool if you don't think you're ever going to have the money to build it with. And, and, and there's nobody who has shown me yet where this $104 million is going to come from. So I guess my desire would be that we back off of this plan and come up with something that's not quite as aggressive. I mean, if we've got 12 miles of greenway right now and you said, okay, in the next five years or so, we'd like to add three or four miles to it, I, I could buy into that. But to come up and say we need X number of miles, 200 miles of bikeway and greenway, it just seems to be magnified more than what our population growth will be. If we were saying we were going to double population in the next 25 years, which I hope we don't. But, but if we do, would going from 12 miles to 24 miles of greenway be adequate? And looking at the current use of the greenway, it certainly looks like it would to me. So having said all that, I guess you can assume how I feel about the plan. And, and it's not that I don't appreciate every bit of the effort that went into it because I know a lot of work went into it. I know, you know, I, I certainly love our Parks and Recreation as much as anybody does in, in Murfreesboro, but I, I just think the, the, the plan is a little bit overly aggressive.
So is that in the form of a motion?
If, if everyone's done speaking, I don't want to rush anybody. I was elected to sit here and listen, and I'll be glad to listen all night if we need to, so.
I mean, I think, I hear you saying you're not, not in favor of this plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. If, is there anybody else that would like to speak, I guess?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, just briefly, I've done a lot of thinking about this since we had our joint session a few months ago. In a lot of ways, I tend to agree with Mr. Smitherman about the, the massive scope of it. When I look, when I think about land use plans, like we've done the planning commission, using those as, as tools, as things of what we would like to see in areas and what might come to fruition, to me, it's a little different than having one where it's mapped out like this with the actual price tags, an enormous price tag attached to it. I'm very proud of the greenway system that we have, and like Eddie said, I think there's time for it to expand as it goes along. I run 45 to 60 miles a week, 52 weeks a year, and not a mile of it has ever been put on the greenway. I run at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, and I don't like the idea of being on the greenway at that. I do it all in residential streets during that time because of that, because I feel safer that way than I do on the greenway system. That's just me. And with that, I'm, I, I think it's a little too monumental to take on.
Well, I'm going to take a different approach. I like the fact that the city, we, we, when I was on the planning commission, we have a 25-year transportation plan. I like the fact that I can go in there and look at them. That doesn't mean that a plan's going to come to fruition, we all know that. That's just a plan. It's, it's, it's a footprint, it's a blueprint. May happen, may not. But I like the idea of being able to go in there and look at that plan, I have the book with it in my office, and try to see where these, who's going to be impacted, how well we're going, doesn't mean it's going to happen, don't mean it's going to be even funded. It's a plan. It's a wish list, it's a, it's a document, it's a blueprint to show this is where we intend to go. This is how we intend to do it. Doesn't mean it's going to happen. So that's just the way I, I look at it. And I, either way, I'm good, but, but the piecemeal, it's a plan, you know, the piecemeal is thing, I, I, I'm not going to support that. I'd rather see the whole picture, so I know the whole picture, so I can know where not to go, or go, if I want to in the future. And that's, that's just the way I see it. It is ambitious, but may happen, may not. It's just a plan. It's not in concrete and stone, neither. Things change. Road, road projects we project to be done on certain years, doesn't happen. They be pushed around, priorities change. You have to have the money to pay for these projects. If you don't have the money, you don't do them. And it's just that simple, to me.
Mayor, I don't want to repeat a lot of things that have been said tonight, but one of the things that made Murfreesboro and Rutherford County successful is long-range planning. You have to have a plan to know where you're going. Without repeating what Mr. Washington said, it is a plan. It, it may not be adopted, it may not be funded. If there's no money that's coming down, nothing will happen. But if our growth continues and our projections continue, Middle Tennessee, not only Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, is going to continue growing. We've even grown during the last five years. So if you don't plan for growth, you'll end up with a, a mess. And, and we, we've seen situations where piecemeal planning and piecemeal action make things a whole lot worse. So I don't know if we have a motion or, or not.
We don't have one.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the plan.
I'm going to second it.
All right. You have a motion and a second to adopt this greenway plan on, this ordinance on first reading. I would just let people know that plans are for public notice. That's the only reason we put plans out there. For many years, we had no plans, and then you just had a government that decided to build a road or to do a project, and nobody knew about it. They had no idea what was going on, why it was to be done. And the reason that we plan things, and consequently, why it takes the city so long to do things, is because we plan them, and we have public hearings and public meetings. Almost, it seems to where it's almost like, I say, the criminal justice system. They finally just get so tired, they agree to it and get things done. But this amount of public comment today, I think, is excellent. I'm sorry that people weren't here for the Planning Commission, certainly to alert them. But again, when you have these hearings and you have these plans, finally, people do get an opportunity to look ahead and see what's going to happen and make public comment on it. So I appreciate all of you who brought your time and effort and attention to this, and I encourage you and others to continue to do that.
Mayor, I have one question.
Mr. McFarland, yes, certainly.
Mr. Lyons, does this commit us, much like our capital improvement plan when we look five years out, does this commit us to, tonight, are we committing to do this project?
No, sir.
We're putting a notice out to say this is what our intent or our plans are maybe in the future.
It does not commit the city to build all of this. Again, when we look at our greenways and our bikeways, they're linear. And so part of the planning process is that we can establish those corridors and establish those linkages. But capital projects of the city, whether they be roads or greenways, you know, all come to the council through the capital improvement plan and a public process. So the funding of construction projects, it does not happen without your approval.
The only comment I would make, and it's to echo the vice mayor, is, you know, I think the residents expect us to be diligent with our money. And I think we've proven that that's what we really try to do, and I think as long as I'm up here, I will continue to do that. But I think the residents have also, do expect ambition from us. And Gateway, John Pitter, all the things that have happened, I think that the residents do expect us to be progressive and be on the forefront. And, I mean, that's, I just want to echo what the vice mayor said.
Vice mayor, you had another comment.
Yeah, then I'm going to be through. Everything I read in Governing Magazine and the things I send to Rob and about sustainable neighborhoods, it all talks about the pedestrian traffic, being more friendly and moving toward promoting more pedestrian traffic, which is not the norm for around here, because we love our cars. But we need to move away from cars, and to do that, you need to have a more sustainable neighborhood where it's more friendly. We have all kinds of projects. Ms. Berg back there, she wants another senior citizen sent on the south side of town. I think we need one on the south side of town. However, she's down on the toll booth a long way, behind police and fire and all that kind of stuff, and greenways are in the same boat. So I look at this, it's just a plan, people. And I heard a lot of stuff tonight, some of which I know is erroneous. When you talk about populations going backwards, go to Detroit, south backwards is gone as opposed to Nashville. And I don't like this informing the public, by the way, but that is just my point of view for us. It's just a plan. It's a roadmap, a blueprint. May happen, may not. I, in my, who beat him in, I can see a lot of it not even being funded or happening. I can see that. You know, when you got Smother down there laying off folks and trying to look in their budgets, I hate to talk about Mark that way, but he has a tough job. We have to manage these things. I have to have the trust in this council and city manager that we're going to manage this thing well, and if an opportunity comes to extend the greenway, fine. If it doesn't, we'll rock right along.
Amen.
Other comments, questions? You have a motion before you. Any questions on the motion? If there are no more, Ms. Wright, would you call the roll for us, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Gilli?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris?
No.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
What's the vote?
Four to three, yes.
Four yeses to three noes. All right. Thank you. So on first reading, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading. So we have second reading and third reading, so we'll move on. Item four has been withdrawn, we'll hear from them later. And item five, we'll hear from the city manager on leadership team updates. Mr. Lyons.
Yes, sir. Mayor, you'll recall, two weeks ago, we began the process to update you on staff's work at our leadership retreat. We talked about some of the work our sharing information group was providing you, as well as our focus on customer service. And one of the other expectations we've set forth for our city department heads and our employees is how can we do a better job, including them, and keeping them informed. And so Ms. Jackson is here to tell you a little bit about what the leading inclusively team has been working on. We want to share that with you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to report on behalf of the leading inclusively team. As Mr. Lyons said, we were divided into teams last fall at our retreat and are doing monthly updates on some of the progress of that. My team, I'm here today representing the fire and rescue department, Chief Gaines, who is here present, and also Pam Russell, who's the Assistant Human Resources Director. And the three of us set out together to identify some tools or skills that supervisors could use to help them engage employees, to improve communication, and to work together to provide understanding and solutions. What we are looking to do is to conduct stay interviews with our employees. It's very common, you know, in the city of Murfreesboro, when we're hiring a new employee, we conduct an interview. A lot of times, when an employee leaves, you conduct an exit interview. A stay interview is just that, what makes you stay? When you're talking to an employee, what is it about your job that keeps you here? Why do you like working for the city of Murfreesboro? Why are you still here? So we believe that these stay interviews are going to increase employee engagement to help with career development and increase retention. Our team has started by conducting a bit of a pilot program, each of us on the team conducting stay interviews within our own departments. And what we're planning to do is compile what we've learned, report back to Mr. Lyons on that, and then gather information and make recommendations to move forward. We expect this technique to be something that is, could be used by supervisors citywide. Some of the questions that you might ask, why did you come to the city of Murfreesboro? Why do you stay? What are some reasons that would make you leave? Do you think that your current position fully utilizes your talents? Asking about things that they've learned, what they'd like, points of recognition, a lot of different things that could be used through this process. It's something we're looking forward to continuing and working on within our own leading inclusively efforts. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson? We certainly appreciate your efforts. We hope they'll be fruitful, certain they will, and thank you for presenting this update on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. From that exciting topic, we'll go to beer permits. Have you got any beer permits?
Yes, Mayor, we have a.
Are. It's wanting to open at 8:10 Northwest Broad Street, Suite 222. It is an ownership and name change from the previous location that was there. We've gotten back your background checks, but we are still lacking the building codes inspections, so we are requesting permission to issue this permit once those are successfully completed.
All right. Is there a motion?
No.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
You have a statements to be considered for payment, or any questions regarding any of those bills to be paid?
Leave it, we pay the bills. Second.
Motion second to pay the bills. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye.
Any, I have no board of commission appointments to you, Mr. Lyons?
No, sir.
All right. Other business from the staff or city council? Mr. Young, did you have something?
I do have, I have a request, Mayor, and I've made some bullet points, so I'm going to read these to the council, and hopefully it will, I don't know how much discussion you want, but I'll start. Both Rutherford County EMS and the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue personnel have provided outstanding service to our residents, particularly during times of crisis. I know there is interest from other council members and city staff in having the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue personnel provide a level of service equal to their trainings and certifications. I would ask staff to provide information on cost, timelines, training, legal, and other aspect, in helping us make a good judgment about if and how the Murfreesboro Rescue should proceed in this manner. I'm really proud of our Fire and Rescue personnel, and they provide us a wonderful service, and our citizens deserve nothing else but to be provided with the best training and the best services that they are trained to provide us. So I would request, Mayor, that if staff would look into that with council's approval, and provide us a report in 60, 90 days, 60 days?
Yes, sir.
Second. Any, all right, you've got, without objection, may I do that? Mr. Lyons, you have your marching orders, if you would please address staff's?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Young's concern. Other things, other business?
I did have one item. Mayor, as a follow-up to your last meeting, we've found a date for a joint workshop with the Water and Sewer Board. We are suggesting the date of Thursday, March 21st, at 5:30 PM in Room 218.
Does that meet with council's approval?
Aye.
Without objection? Is there any other business to come before the council from the staff? Counselor? If not, you're adjourned. Thank you.